Good evening, everyone. If we could rise and play the allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, with all my heart, and with liberty and justice for all. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mrs. Diglio, here.
Mrs. LaFois, here.
Mrs. Teetz, here.
Mayor Kuz.
Here. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January fifth, two thousand twenty-four. This point I'll entertain an approval of the April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
And I will second the the minutes.
Thank you. Any comments, discussion, or changes needed? No, okay. A roll call?
Mr. Dixon.
Staying.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes. I now entertain a motion to approve the April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four special meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes.
I'll second those.
A roll call, or did, yeah, roll call.
Mr. Dixon.
I'm staying.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes. At this point in the meeting, the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to speak, for anyone who wishes to be heard, speakers are asked to take one turn of the microphone and to please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please copy, please provide a copy, and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Council may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. Please identify yourself and spell your last name for the record. As is customary, we'll begin with anyone in person who would like to speak first. Please do so by stepping forward to the microphone. Not seeing anyone, we'll transition to Zoom. Anyone on Zoom who would like to offer a comment, please indicate so by raising your hand. Not seeing anyone on Zoom, we will close the first public session and move to council manager reports, beginning with town manager Russo.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple proclamations, I'll note for the recording, in case the mayor wants to read them. We have the Arbor Day proclamation, and we have the Rotary Club Hundred Year Anniversary Proclamation. I know they have their celebration coming up this week. Also, Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony are coming up. I'm sure Sandy will talk about those, and then our next meeting, because of Memorial Day, offices are closed. Next meeting will be Wednesday, May twenty-ninth for the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon?
Um, nothing at this time.
Councilmember Diglio?
Okay, um, not too much. Um, five, four, myself, Helen, Michelle. We were all at the Arbor Day tree planting down at the recycling center, and I have to, Servos did a wonderful job between bringing the tree in, digging the hole, planting it, and there were quite a few people there, which was nice. And yes, five twenty-seven is the Memorial Day Parade. It begins at ten o'clock, uh, for, as far as the parade itself lineup is at eight thirty. And, um, from there, we go down to Memory Park, where we have a service in honor of the fallen vets. Everyone is welcome, and I hope to see anybody and everyone there to honor our vets who have fallen. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Councilmember Teetz?
Um, I'll just tag on a little bit to what Sandy said. I thought the, uh, Arbor Day, um, event was a success. There were a lot more people this year than last year. Um, part of that had to do with the weather, so everyone's welcome that they didn't get rained on. And I actually heard a comment where somebody's like, oh, I didn't even realize that there was like grass in the area of the, um, of the recycling center. So I think the tree, you know, being there now and, you know, as it gets bigger and stuff, is definitely going to draw attention to that area. And I'm assuming it was DPW and stuff. They did a great job cleaning up that area, paving the, the road, the parking lot, um, through fair, whatever you might want to call that. Um, so I think the recycling event, um, and the townwide pickup, uh, household bulk pickup was a success. I know, um, I got a permit and put some stuff out on Friday. About an hour later, somebody showed up with a U-Haul and, and took it, which was great to see because, um, I think they'll probably reuse some of the stuff, and that's a good thing. Um, and then Sandy and I both attended the fire department's annual, uh, dinner on May fourth that evening. Um, so it was nice, um, you know, the fire department every year does, um, does this annual dinner. They recognize their members, um, the hours of service that, um, like all the volunteers do, but there were the top five people that responded to, you know, close to five hundred calls each this year. Um, and then uh, there was a slide presentation, which really displays how much they do. In the slide presentation, they show scenes from the past year, um, actual fires, drills, and other events. So, uh, it's always a good time. Um, and then just want to, uh, congratulate the Newt, the Newton police officers that completed this year's, um, unity tour. If you're not familiar with that, um, they ride for other fallen police officers. Um. So I don't know why. Why do I do this? Anyway, uh, Mike Monaco, retired police officer, and I think we all know his story. Justin Bellis, Tom Muller, and Garrett Armstrong all completed safely the ride. Um, I was not there, so they did get rained on one day, but other than that, they said that the ride was, uh, was a successful event, and of course, most of them will do it again. And they were also, they also rode with a bunch of other police officers from Sussex County. So, uh, good job. It brings awareness. And that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie, Mayor LaFois?
Thank you. Um, a couple other awareness, uh, month recognitions I just want to, uh, bring awareness to. Um, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Um, so the stigma around mental health uh, and treatment has long existed, even though it started to change. Um, but still, people had to seek help or even talk about it with their loved ones for the fear of being judged and facing unnecessary backlash. Um, during, uh, um, Mayor Dixon's tenure, the town of Newton was designated as a stigma-free community, uh, where we encourage all those needing services to seek services. So you'll see the bright green, yellow, that color um, signs around town, um, that designated the town of Newton as a stigma-free community, which we're proud of. May is also Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Uh, the month-long observance recognizes, recognizes the influence and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to the achievements and culture of the United States. And then, as, um, Sandy started to allude to, uh, May is Military Appreciation Month as well. Introduced in nineteen ninety-nine, Military Appreciation Month encourages Americans to reflect on the sacrifices made by soldiers, sailors, and all current and former military personnel. So, uh, we're always really proud to host the Memorial Day Parade and the services afterwards, and then we should also be seeing soon our banners going up around town, which is really exciting. On April twenty-fifth, we attended the Sussex County Chamber Awards Luncheon. Um, if anybody wants to see the program, Newton businesses and/or individuals were nominated in every single category, which was very, uh, nothing. So also something that we're very proud of. Um, and the town of Newton was specifically nominated in the Outstanding Community Event of the Year Award for our new mural. Um, Newton was also nominated for the Workplace of the Year Award, which is fantastic. Tom and the team, congratulations. And our very own town manager, Thomas Russo, was nominated for Business Person of the Year Award. Um, so congratulations to all the nominees and the award winners. On May second, um, I had the opportunity to attend Sheriff Strata's Sussex County Crime Stoppers Awards Dinner, um, which was a great event, uh, well-attended by people from all over the community, law enforcement, municipal, uh, individuals and supporters who, uh, all get, come together to raise money, um, to pay out, uh, for when people call in tips to the Crime Stoppers, um, tip line. Um, uh, so we raised some money that night for that cause. Uh, and then as Michelle and Sandy, uh, mentioned on May fourth, made Arbor, uh, Arbor Day, the Arbor Day Tree Planting Ceremony, I just wanted to also add on to the comments, recognize Deb Danielson, um, our DPW, the Shade Tree Commission members, and again, Servos for, uh, court coordinating and commemorating, commemorating the event. I can't talk tonight. Um, did have a request that the next place for tree planting is in the dog park. As I look toward guys in the back there, um, to pass on the message, uh, some people want some shade of the dog park, understandably so. Um. We did attend Rachel Bucci's appreciation event at the Arbor Restaurant. I'm bringing that up only because I want to point out as, as often as I can, um, the attributes of the Arbor Restaurant, um, the culinary program there, uh, prepared all the appetizers, they served at the event, they hosted at the event, and they just always do such a great job. Um, they have finished for the semester, so they're not having their bakery Friday mornings nor their dinners anymore. But I understand, um, they are going to do some pop-up events, uh, which I think one has just been announced. Um, and, um, also their cooking classes, which apparently like sell out the minute that they're announced on the website. So get on the mailing list if you want to, uh, to learn more about, learn more about the events that are happening at the Arbor Restaurant. Uh, this, this Wednesday is the May Planning Board Meeting, so we'll report on that at the next council meeting, and then, yes, we have the Newton Rotary Event on Thursday evening, which, uh, it's their hundredth anniversary event. Um, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the only thing that I'll add, uh, is to, uh, further supplement the comments that Councilmember Teetz had about the fire department. On May third, there was a fire at Newtonian Gardens, Seventy West End. Uh, there was a resident trapped within the apartment, uh, between the police department and the fire department. They were able to, uh, extricate the resident. Uh, they were evaluated and they, uh, luckily, uh, did not have, uh, too bad of an experience as a result of that. Uh, and thanks to the water department for keeping our water system in check to be able to put the fire out. Uh, and that's all that I have. We'll move on to our ordinances. A second reading and public hearing of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash six. An ordinance authorizing the change of a street name in accordance with NJSA forty colon sixty-seven dash one K. Now, open, uh, have to take a motion to open the hearing to the public. I'm sorry, the, the hearing is open. If anyone in person would like to speak, feel free to do so by stepping up to the microphone. Not seeing anyone, we'll transition to Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to comment on this item, please indicate so by raising your hand. Not seeing anyone, we will close the hearing to the public on that ordinance. And I'll entertain a motion to act on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash six.
I'll make a motion to act on twenty twenty-four dash six.
And I will second.
Any comments or discussion? Okay, roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes. We'll now move to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven, which is an ordinance to change wage levels for the Chief Financial Officer and Finance Director in the Town Salary Ordinance. We'll open the hearing to the public. If anyone in person would like to speak on this item, please do so by stepping forth to the microphone. Not seeing anyone, we'll transition to Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to comment on this item, please indicate so by raising your hand. Not seeing anyone on Zoom, we will close the hearing to the public. And I'll entertain a motion to act on ordinance twenty twenty-four to seven.
I'll make a motion to act on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven.
I'll second.
Three. Comments or discussion on this item? Okay. A roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes. We'll now move to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight, which is a bond ordinance providing an appropriation of eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars for various water sewer improvements in and by the town Newton in the county of Sussex, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of bonds or notes of the town for financing part of the appropriation. We'll open the hearing to the public. If anyone in person would like to speak, please do so by stepping forward to the microphone. Not seeing anyone in person, we'll move to Zoom. Anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand. Couple more to go. Not seeing anyone, we will close the hearing to the public, and I'll entertain a motion to act on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight.
I will make a motion to act on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight.
I will second the motion.
Any comments or discussion on this ordinance? Roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes. We'll now move to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine. An ordinance providing funding for various water sewer improvements for the town of Newton and appropriating four hundred and six thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-seven cents for such purpose. We'll open the hearings to the public. If anyone in person would like to speak on this item, please step forward to the microphone. If not seeing anyone in person, we will move to Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to speak on this item, please indicate so by raising your hand. Not seeing anyone on Zoom, we will close the hearing to the public, and I'll entertain a motion to act on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine.
I'll make a motion to act on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine.
I'll second.
Any comments or discussion on this ordinance? A roll call, please?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes. Move to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten. A bond ordinance providing for an appropriation of one million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for various water sewer vehicle acquisitions in and by the town Newton in the county of Sussex, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of one million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars worth of bonds or notes of the town for financing part of the appropriation. We'll open the hearing to the public. If anyone in person would like to speak on this item, please indicate so by stepping forward to the microphone. Not seeing anyone in person, we'll transition to Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to speak on this item, please indicate so by raising your hand. Not seeing anyone on Zoom, we're going to close the hearing to the public, and I'll entertain a motion to act on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten.
I'll offer ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten for action.
I'll second ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten.
Any comments or discussion on this ordinance?
I just have one, uh, Congress, did we allow for this in the capital gains in the budget itself?
Yeah, and this is the funding that we're trying to get the I-Bank funding for reimbursement on.
Okay.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, uh, a roll call, please?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes. Move to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven, which is a bond ordinance providing for an appropriation of one million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for various capital improvements in and by the town of Newton in the county of Sussex, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars worth of bonds or notes of the town for financing part of the appropriation. We'll open the hearing to the public. If anyone in person would like to speak, please indicate so by stepping up to the microphone. Not seeing anyone in person, we'll move to Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to speak on this item, please indicate so by raising your hand. Not seeing anyone on Zoom, we will close the hearing to the public, and I'll entertain a motion to act on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven.
I'll make a motion to act on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven.
And I will second ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven.
Any comments or discussion on this one? All right, now, roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes. I will now entertain a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve, which is an ordinance providing funding for a police Alco test machine for the town of Newton and appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars for such purpose.
I will make the motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes.
Public hearing on the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve will be held on Wednesday, May twenty-ninth at seven P M.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, which is an ordinance amending zoning section three twenty dash four regarding maximum bedrooms for multifamily units and section three twenty dash twenty-three regarding parking space requirements for multifamily dwellings.
I'll offer ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes.
Again, the public hearing on, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen will be held on Wednesday, May twenty-ninth at seven P M.
And thank you for also the planning board to be there, so.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, which is a bond ordinance providing a supplemental appropriation of seventy thousand dollars for the resurfacing of Duma Drive, Duma Court, Valley View Court, and Babit Court in and by the town of Newton in the county of Sussex, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of sixty-six thousand, five hundred dollars worth of bonds or notes of the town for financing part of the appropriation.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen.
And I will second motion or, or, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen.
The roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes.
The public hearing, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen will be held on Wednesday, May twenty-ninth at seven P M.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, which is an ordinance authorizing the private sale of public lands not needed for public purpose to the state of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection pursuant to NJSA forty A colon twelve dash thirteen B one.
I'll offer ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen.
I will second.
A roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes.
The public hearing on the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen will be held on Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, seven P M.
Thank you. Allow, entertain a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, which is an ordinance of the town of Newton authorizing the amendment, the financial agreement previously entered into by the town of Newton, and WSR One Urban Renewal LLC, and the assignment and assumption of said financial agreement to One Twenty-three Water Urban Renewal LLC.
I will offer ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen.
And I will second twenty twenty-four dash sixteen.
The roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
Yes. Presumably, the public hearing on that one will also be.
Yes, it will be on May twenty-ninth.
Oh. Well, now move to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Mr. Russo, if you wouldn't mind a rundown?
Sure. One forty is issuance of estimated third quarter tax bills. One forty-one authorizes payment two for drainage at Memory Park. One forty-two is change order number two for drainage at Memory Park. One forty-three is an application for a grant to the New Jersey Clean Energy Program. One forty-four rejects all submittals for the bid for cleaning of the Marsh Lake water treatment plant Clearwell and High Street Water Storage Tank. One forty-five is a resolution from the League of Municipalities on the Oprah Modernization. One forty-six is execution of a shared service for us to provide animal control to Frieden Township, June first through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. One forty-seven, bills and vouchers. One forty-eight and one forty-nine tie into the aforementioned ordinance about the redevelopment agreement for Water Street Holdings and also authorizing the town manager to execute and deliver a certificate of completion on behalf of the town of Newton for the project. Basically, the, the retail portion Starbucks, Chipotle, Panera's have been sold off to a different entity, and that's why we're doing the ordinance and making these addendums to the redevelopment agreement and delivering a certificate of completion.
Thank you. Uh, any comments or discussion on any aspect of the consent agenda, or would anyone like to remove something from these consent agenda?
So just a comment about, uh, resolution one forty-six dash twenty twenty-four. Um, this is an additional, uh, shared service agreement with Frieden Township for animal control services. Um, and so this makes number, how many, Tom, will be providing animal control services?
Eight, eight or nine.
Eight or nine?
Maybe not.
A lot. Um, the point being that, um, uh, this is only a couple of years in the making, and, and the reputation of the quality of our animal control services, um, is certainly wrestling, you know, going out through the county. Um, we have beautiful facilities that we just did the ribbon cutting for. Um, the whole team is just doing a fantastic job. So I just wanted to point out, you know, our continued, um, search for shared service agreements that makes sense for us to enter into, that also help to, um, bring in revenue. This is a, almost a self-reputating, um, department and actually earns us revenue for the services provided. So that's a great job. It's the only comment that I had. If no others, I'll offer the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Mayor, just for the edification of yourself and the council, the legislature did act on resolution one forty-five today. I believe both houses adopted the modified Oprah. Amazing when the legislature wants to move on something, how quickly they can move in less than two weeks.
So now it's just waiting for signature from the governor.
Signing of the governor.
Thank you. Any other commentary, removal requests? Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
And I will offer the consent agenda as presented.
I will second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Kuz?
If standing from check numbers one zero six four zero and all of the checks between one zero seven zero three and one zero seven zero nine, yes, otherwise is an inclusive list. We'll now move to our second public session. Anyone in public who would like to speak, feel free to do so. Be limited to three minutes and the same restrictions from the first session. If anyone in person would like to speak, we'll start with you. Please approach the microphone to do so. Not seeing anyone in person, we'll transition to Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to comment on any topic, please indicate so by raising your hand. Not seeing anyone on Zoom, we will close the second public session and move to our discussion this evening, which is a lead service line replacement.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we had a conversations with the mayor and deputy mayor and myself about implementing a lead service line replacement program. As you know, the state of New Jersey implemented legislation and was adopted into law about communities, addressing the concerns about lead service lines going into dwelling units and, you know, to homes. So we actually have one, uh, residential property that we're aware of that came to fruition the past few weeks. Came to our knowledge about there being a lead or galvanized line going into the property, and that began the conversation about how we should handle any type of reimbursement program or payment program, um, going forward. So I've had conversations with Eric in his office, and I know he has experience in other towns with this issue. Spoke to Kenny and Dustin and the staff, and I also did research on half a dozen other communities just to see if there were any common denominators about how they were handling, um, the particular issue. So what you have, um, is part of the information tonight is a draft ordinance that's kind of just very basic, just something to start the conversation. And then, uh, Kat and I had created a re- replacement reimbursement form and just kind of a narrative about what individuals would have to do. So basically, we're re- recommending that the town implement a replacement program whereby residents can either apply to have a reimbursement for work that they have done at their property, which would require the submittal of certain types of information, or the town could hire a vendor through the bidding process and have a vendor go out and do the work, and the town would absorb the cost. Either way, the town, we're recommending that the town absorb the cost because we understand that it'd be very difficult for people to afford the average repair, which could, you know, cost eight to twelve thousand dollars for a property, and we just didn't feel that it was right if we were punitive and pushing the, the cost back on the taxpayers, knowing that there's an opportunity over time to work on grants for this type of a program. That's what other communities are doing. Um, we're still going through. Um we're still going through the process of identifying lead service lines. Dave Simmons, I asked Dave to come in as our engineer to speak to what we've done so far, kind of on the back end in terms of paperwork and research through his office and the Department of Public Works. And I think we're to the point where we need to be a little bit more aggressive in identifying the lines so that once we have all the lines identified, then we can go out and we can get grants, because you know, I can't, I don't want to go out for grants if I don't have the total order of magnitude. So I think we have approximately a thousand lines through Dave's research that I think we're okay on, but it still means there's seventeen hundred lines that we still have to do work on. Also, um there's a piece of equipment called the Swordfish that Kenny had recommended that is approved in other states. It's approved by the EPA, but it's not approved in the state of New Jersey or the DEP. So we had sent the, I had sent the letter to the DEP asking them for approval to allow Newton to be like a test program and beta test the the equipment so that we could expedite um working on the seventeen hundred lines that still need to be identified. I haven't received a response yet. I also sent the letter to Senator Space's office and the assembly people, just so they knew to keep it on their radar in case they had any contacts with the DEP that they could try to facilitate and accelerate the approval of the equipment, because not only could Newton use that equipment, it might be opportunities for shared services for other towns to use the equipment too, because it accelerates, it makes it easier and quicker to identify if the line is lead or galvanized. And I just think having that piece of equipment would be a great thing to help our our employees accelerate the identification process, both for us and possibly for other communities. So I'm going to ask Dave just to kind of talk about the the legislation. I have some paperwork that Mike or water operator provided I'll hand out. But Dave, maybe you could just walk through the work that you've done so far on the lead service line replacement program with the town, what the requirements are, and then we'll see if the council has any questions. Dave?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. I uh just want to give you some statistics, just so you know where we're at as of tonight. And basically, as of July first, this will be the end of the third year of a ten-year period that we're working on identifying the lead service lines and getting them replaced. Uh, the town of Newton has a total by our count of two thousand seven hundred and fifty-two water service lines.
Sorry, Dave, can you just repeat that one more time?
Sure, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-two. And one of the main things that we did in conjunction with the water department staff, who's got a tremendous amount of knowledge of the system. Over the last forty-plus years, we've done a lot of water main replacements in the town. And when we do a water main replacement, what we normally do is, in addition to the water main itself, replace the service line from the main up to and including the curb stop and the curb box with type K copper. So over the last three years, we've been removing all the information from our files, making copies for the water department's files. So they've got it to validate their records in case somebody from the DEP decided to come up and audit anybody. So we've got that documentation, and that basically helped us identify a total of six hundred and forty-two services on the town side that were taken care of with those different projects. And again, between the information in our office, plus I know uh the water department went through on the old meter cards and what have you, and they were able to extract some information, again, to provide the documentation that you need if the DEP did say prove it to us. So we've got that information. In addition, on your website and uh through visual observation and some feedback from different customers, they were asked to try and identify what material was coming into the foundation of their home right by the water meter, what type of material that was. And of those, uh a total number of verified non-led water services on the customer side from the curb box into the house was two hundred and fifty-three services. Now, of those totals, uh total of sixty-two are verified on both the customer side and the town side. So when you take those numbers and add them up and subtract, so you don't double count the ones that are verified on both sides, we've got by our count eight hundred and thirty-three services taken care of. So that that basically put us on target for at least ten percent for years one, two, and three. The ten percent coming in because it's over a ten-year program, ten percent. Every year, we have to uh complete a Excel spreadsheet that the DEP provides and list all this information and submit it to them. One of the concerns that the DEP had, and we've taken various webinars over the years as they rolled this program out, they didn't want any municipality to wait to year nine to start this, because you're really going to be behind the eight ball, as they say, if you waited that long. So we have been keeping up with that ten percent. You take ten percent at twenty-seven fifty-two, roughly three hundred times three is nine hundred, we're at eight thirty-three. We're pretty good on target. That's the good news. The more difficult news is, as they say, we've basically run out of what I call the low-hanging fruit. We've exhausted the information in our files, and I know the water department has gone through and looked at all the old cards, uh talked to some of the former employees that worked for Newton and know a lot about the system, and got all the information that we could that was readily available. Now we're getting to the point where we've got to start doing some more field investigation, boots on the ground, if you will. And some of that work involves going into a basement and looking at the service line coming in by the water meter, uh checking it out to see if it's copper, plastic, lead, or is the DEP changed it about a year ago? If it's galvanized, that counts as lead as well. So you get that visual observation. The next thing that you would probably have to do is then go to the curb box, and at the curb box, dig down to the service line and see what the material is on each side of the main. So you're literally into some physical work to excavate the line to see what the material is. Going to what Mister Russo talked about with the Swordfish, uh we have contacts with some of the suppliers that do water main, water main pipe and fittings for us over the years, and they transitioned to another company. They came up to see our office, and that's when they brought up this Swordfish, which basically, just so you know what it is, it's almost like a like a plumber snake that would go down into the pipe from the inside. My understanding is it'll go down to a minimum of a half-inch line. And on the tip, uh you would put that snake into the service line, and depending on the reading on the gauge, what range it's in, it'll determine by their gauge whether it's copper, galvanized, or lead. So that would be a big help. Plus, when you bring the tip back out, you put it in this particular reagent that turns a certain color, it means it contacted lead. Now, that seems to us to be a much less intrusive way of doing this and a lot less, hopefully, manual labor out in the field. The other thing you have to keep in mind is, it's one thing if we're in a residential part of the town where you're digging up a curb box that's in a lawn area. It's bad enough you have to dig out in the lawn area. If you're dealing in certain areas in the central business district, if you will, where you've got a jackhammer concrete or what have you, because everything's sidewalk or street skate material, it gets really labor-intensive and expensive. So we're hopeful that the DEP, especially since, as Mister Russo said, EPA, Pennsylvania, and New York State have already approved the use of this type of equipment, that we'd be able to gain approval to use it, perhaps purchase this unit and save a lot of time and what have you. But right now, what you're really looking for, I think, is in the next couple of years, actually having water department staff go out and evaluate this so we can keep on track with the ten percent, or quite frankly, even get a little ahead of the curve. So you get a better handle on what kind of magnitude of service line replacement you are or are not talking about doing. Just to give you a other statistic, uh in twenty twenty-three, basically, the water department reported that they replaced three lead goosenecks, which basically is a lead piece that screws into the water main before they came up with other type of fittings to do that and transition to make a bend and then go to type K copper to go into the house. But if you've got that lead gooseneck, the DEP wants that out of there as well. Another issue with something like that, usually the water main, unless it's in an easement someplace, is in the middle of the road. It's bad enough it's in a municipal road. It gets even more difficult if it's in a county or state highway. Then you're into traffic control, opening permits, that type of thing. So if the Swordfish can go in and eliminate some of that extra work, it'd be a really big help. So basically, to summarize, we kept on track. We're on track as far as what the DEP wanted. By this July first, we will be submitting the third round of what we've done so that they're all taken care of. But again, not wanting to wait till the last minute, we really have to get involved and get down to more field work to evaluate, provide the data for the following years. That's a brief summary.
Thank you, Mister Simmons.
You're welcome, sir.
Does anyone have any questions for Mister Simmons?
So if the state does not approve the use of the Swordfish, the only option is the laborious plan that you've outlined for the guys to go in to break in the ground and check all of that?
I think Mister Mister Jankel can go a little further on that because he he transitions into that department. But bottom line is, that's probably where we're going. So it's worthwhile.
Far more, not only laborious, but expensive and inconvenient.
It is, if you cannot identify it inside the home, that makes the job a little bit easier, but the state actually suggests three piles, which is where you dig down to the surface. Um like they've said, on the main, already like goosenecks. If you don't know what it is, you have to dig on both sides, whether it's our side or the customer's side to identify. So like they've said, curb box, main, and if you're not quite sure inside, then somewhere you have to dig a third hole, depending on what you hit. Could be a half a day, could be a full day, just for one side or both sides. Like they've said, you get into the county or state roads, besides having to have traffic control, the permitting and everything else like that. A lot of those roads have concrete. So that makes the job a lot harder there, too. So one of those, you're looking at minimum, probably a full day. Average cost um that I got per a hole is three hundred and fifty dollars per hole, average cost right off the rip, and that's with no problems. Okay, and that's including paving, everything else like that. You also don't know what you're going to hit when you're under there. That Swordfish, like they've said, I've watched videos on it, fifteen minutes. So you could go out, bang out, let's say a rainy day, or we put somebody on it for a whole week or something, you could get ten, fifteen, twenty done in a day. Um my plan was, we got such a good quote on it, actual price is around seventy-eight thousand. The company, I went directly to the manufacturer, they were going to give us for ninety-eight, two of them. Which then we could have trained two crews, DPW, water and sewer, gone out, banged out a lot. Like Tom said and Dave said, it also gives you an option for, let's say, Sparta, somewhere else, some other town. They hear, we have it, it works well. There's your shared service, and we could actually do, be doing them a favor because it's going to take
And pay for itself.
A long time. And if we can identify those, that's going to knock down that cost because we don't have to dig. Plus, we're not a huge crew. We have three on the water side, three on the sewer side, and then naturally DPW. So we already have plans of doing water main work and everything else like that, besides the everyday work. That's where it comes into play. We can knock any time off. That would be the fastest thing to do.
So this might be an obvious question, but um absent an approval of the Swordfish equipment, if we went ahead and purchased it and used it anyways and then submitted those results, does that mean that they would not be accepted results by the state?
See, I'm a gambler.
Hmm, I'm just wondering, because, right, if it's proven proven technology and we can demonstrate that it it does X, Y, and Z, which would clearly identify the lines and their materials, we submit that just because that piece of equipment's not per se, main doesn't approve to these equipment, the results are still.
The statute does not say it has to be DEP approved.
Oh, so it's silent.
It says using new technology, any new exhaust, all those avenues, including new technology. Does not state what that new technology has to be, or that it has to be DEP approved. It's up to us whether you want to start that fight, because, like I said, I'm a gambler. Because if we can get those and knock those off, then you're talking about a hundred thousand dollar gamble. Do you want to take that gamble and then have the state say no, because then we're back to square one anyway? So.
So we have an interpretation on the legislation? Counsel?
The legislature and its infinite wisdom, just like it did with the Public Records Act, equally problematic. They tend to pass bills without necessarily going to the next step, which is now what's it going to take to do it? I realize that they were all flush with the thought of federal money just flowing in here like water, no pun intended. Um I would tend to agree with Kenny. I think you you run that risk, you go to them and say, this is what we found, and let them dare tell you that this is not new technology, and then say to them, okay, what is new technology? Divining rods? Those of you who are old enough to remember dividing rods.
See, Helen, even when we call the state to talk to them, depending on who you talk to, they'll tell you flat out, this is still a work in progress. I actually called up like I was a customer. Talked to three different people, got two of the same version, the third one told me a completely different um version. So they're up in the air on how this is to go to. Even though they have their legislation, they don't really know what to do with it either, because they know how much of a cost this is on municipalities and utilities and everything. So we don't even get a straight answer um from there. And like Dave said, we've had contacts with the DEP for their Swordfish. Supposedly, the manufacturer's hats too, but we don't know how much he's pushing it and everything, but um nobody's gotten back to us.
So for, you may have done this already, but is it worth reaching out to the manufacturer to see if they have sold this device to any other municipality in New Jersey to identify anyone who's already using this?
Um, last time I talked to them was about two and a half months ago, and at that time, nobody wanted to be the first in New Jersey.
Oh, let's do it.
So.
So I'm less of a risk taker than Helen. Um.
Oh, didn't you tell me that I'm a lack of it?
Yeah, but that was, that wasn't this. So my my advice would be, let's at least give them the opportunity to respond
Sure.
since they just got the letter. But I would put some sort of a mental timeline on, you know, we we still have to do the ordinance. We'd still like to implement the program. We'd still like to help the one homeowner that already has identified the lead issue. Um, but yeah, after X number of days, I think the council can give me the green light and Monica has a form of her seat to find a hundred thousand. Um I think at that point, you roll the dice, but you know, I'd give them ninety days to, you know, weigh in on it, and then at that point, we just, we we move forward because there there's no logical reason why EPA, Pennsylvania, New York have approved this technology. It's not like New Jersey would be the first, and it would be the first in the nation, you know what I mean? So it's just.
The the city of Baltimore is using it right now.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, we have concurrent issues. We have concurrent issues going on. I mean, we're up at, we're at the end of year three of this ten years, and we're running out of our bank lines. The other issue is trying to plan for the allocation of resources, human resources, to actually get all these projects, you know, mapped out, done, and then the money, and then until you kind of identify what our scope is and our magnitude, we can't even apply for the grants and the funding, which we would love to do, so this doesn't fall on the backs of backs of the taxpayers. And in addition to that, we have properties now that are, you know, the homeowners, businesses that are aware of the legislation know that we have a timeline and a ticking clock and are looking to get the work done as well. So um, you know, Tom, I think that other piece about implementing the what's the official name that you call it?
For that homeowners. Replacement program.
The right, the right.
Yeah.
Municipal reimbursement or or property replacement program. I mean, that's, I think we have to do anyways for sure.
I I would recommend that just because we can do some one-offs, we can kind of get our, sorry to use the Eric analogy, our feet wet on this. But the reality is we we need to do that, you know, it's two-pronged approach. We need to have a replacement program, if you agree. And you know, like I said, some towns, I know Eric's involved in one town where the the cost is being put back on the property on. I I talked to the mayor and deputy mayor, and they they agreed that that maybe that wouldn't be the strategy. Developed a lot of goodwill between the low tax increase, the revow, and you know, phasing in the water sewer rate increase when mathematically you should have done it all upfront. So I think you lose a lot of goodwill, as Helen mentioned in our conversation Friday. If we start throwing fifteen thousand dollar assessments on properties, eh, and knowing that we can tap into grants once we know the order of magnitude, I could apply for community project grant funding through Congressman Gotheimer's office and have it all federally funded. So why go down one road when you know there's opportunities, right? That's that, I don't think that's reasonable on our part. And and we want compliance, because it is a health issue, right? So we want, we don't want people to not let us in or not tell us what they have because they're afraid, and now you got this lead issue that might be causing harm to their families or children or seniors.
Right, Michigan. I mean, I don't, I don't like. Right, Michigan, I mean, I, I don't think, I don't think that it is fair, you know, there are enough of ma, enough mandates that come from Trenton. Um, some make sense, some don't make sense, most of them are unfunded. I don't think it makes any sense or is fair to go back to the taxpayers in Newton to say. Oh, and by the way, you can pay us fifteen thousand dollars now and we'll do the work, or we're gonna do an assessment on your property and put a lien on it for fifteen thou. I mean, that's, to me, ma, is, makes no sense. I'm not gonna be, else agrees, but.
I mean, the, the water system is the water system. It is what it is. It's, it's, it's an old system. And, you know, I don't think there's anyone here who has not heard a complaint from anyone saying that, you know, the, the bills are too high or that we charge too much. Or that the capital improvement fee is too much. So here's an opportunity to go back and say, hey, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll meet you.
Hmm.
Yeah. And if nothing wants a new toy.
And we just did a, we just did a fee increase because of the investment in the infrastructure that needs to be done because of the aging system. Like that's, we've already had to pass on some of those costs, so this one just doesn't make sense.
And we want compliance too.
Absolutely.
That's, I think that's huge too, so.
Health and well-being and safety is paramount.
Risk, people not wanting to comply because they don't want to bear that expense, I think, a lot better if we just.
When David Kay, we're talking, I was like, oh, too bad our reassessment contractor wasn't, um, licensed to also assess. Water lines while they were in everybody's houses, they could have just checked like that. Right, or checked another box in the basement.
But. Yeah, so basically the ordinance that we drafted, Eric's help is participation in the programs offered by the town at no cost to the owner. And they can use a contractor to access their property, verify the existence of the line, do the replacement. And then there's certain things they would be required to submit to the town, construction permit cover, plumbing permit, permit receipt, canceled check, proof of payment. Invoiced by licensed plumber, copies of inspection approval sticker, before and after photos, you know, it's enumerated in the cheat sheet that we provided to the council. Um, so it's documented, it's done correctly, and it's done by a licensed plumber, which is very important, or. Um, you know, it, it's something that we can do. Um, I know Kenny has a couple vendors, I actually spoke to a vendor that's doing the work for New Jersey American Water. So there are, you know, licensed plumbers that are, are getting more involved in this, because obviously this is a statewide, this is a hu, this is multi-million dollars. If not billion dollars, I mean, this is a huge undertaking statewide. Um, and then we would hire the vendor and we would monitor the, what the work that they do and everything. And then I already have Sean Canning develop the bid, so when we do get order of magnitude, I wouldn't do it now. But possibly soon, do, you know, just go out to bid and then. If you're a licensed plumber and you know you've got guaranteed work from the town of Newton to do this, there's incentives to be competitive on the pricing end, right? So, um, that's really the impetus for the ordinance. Obviously, we'll work with Dave and. Penny and Dustin and the crew, see how we can accelerate and really have two plans. One is, you know. What's on the ground and the other is the technology, i.e. swordfish model that after, you know, ninety days of waiting for the D E P. We have our game plan and we, and then we execute the game plan. I'd really like to get all the lines identified in the next eighteen months, right? Twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, so that in twenty-six. We're just doing this massive project because we have until thirty-one. I wouldn't be surprised if the state even extends it out, but, you know, we have seven years, but. Seven years goes fast too, right? So I don't want to just sit back and let it unfold. I'd rather be a little bit more aggressive than we have been at this point.
So once it's all identified, so, not, probably not the twenty-five, but probably twenty-six budgets and beyond. We'll see this in the.
I would.
Capital.
Yeah, just to be realistic, because if, like Andy said, if we're doing one a day. Okay, that's a big difference than if we're doing eight a day or ten a day or twenty. The acceleration factor, if we do it seven days a week. It would take eighteen months just to do the other, you know, seventeen, eighteen hundred. Well, you know what I mean? So we gotta be realistic about that, because we're doing a New Hampshire project, we're doing Mason, uh, you know. They're doing all these projects in-house, so it's not like we have extra guys that we're, we can just throw at this and not neglect everything else. And manage a water plant, sewer plant in the process too, right? So it's.
So speaking of in-house, Tom, the, is it? Is there a benefit to do a cost analysis about bringing plumbing services in-house to expand the team, the resources and the? Skill level? With licensed plumbers on staff?
Haven't really talked to Kenny about that. It's something we could consider, but we really haven't had that conversation at this point.
I mean, once, again, once we understand what the magnitude is and what the cost would be. When you have some preliminary numbers, it would be interesting just to do that cost analysis to see if that would make sense in the long run.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm estimating two hundred and seventy-five houses minimum, so you're talking. You know, this is a four million dollar, five million dollar project.
Hmm.
Conservative, conservative. And you know, a lot of this information came from our friends in Carney, they were very helpful and they, they have an aging infrastructure, they got nine thousand. Lines, two-thirds are letter galvanized. They're absorbing it as part of their, um, road improvement projects, because they said they would be digging up every twenty-five feet, if not for that. But they're spending millions of dollars a year to do the roads and, I mean, that, that's, that's an unbelievably. Ownerish type of project, which we couldn't afford to do if we wanted to. And I don't think we want to dig up every street if we don't have to, right? So, and you know, obviously. My hypothesis is, and Dave agreed, as you get closer to the core.
Yeah.
And certain homes are older in the core. You're gonna start getting the, the green light on letter galvanized just because of the age of the homes and the, and you know, this was. This is what they did eighty years ago or a hundred years ago, right? And didn't think twice. And now in twenty twenty-four, we have to, you know, change everything that was done. So I, I think we'll, we'll definitely get more hits as we, we deep dive into it. But I just wanted you all to weigh in on the aspect of a reimbursement program, because I wasn't comfortable. Putting the own, own, onus on the property owners in terms of the cost, because it's. I know other towns are doing it, I just didn't think that made sense in the long run for us to, to recommend that. So.
Any thoughts from, uh, the rest of the entourage back there?
There's a lot of work happening.
Hmm.
Out of what way you look at.
Their consensus on.
And do you have thoughts from anyone here?
If we do get the swordfish, I want to see it in action. For the first two or three times.
As a colonoscopy.
Endoscopy, much cleaner.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Thank you, doctor.
I think that goes in the category of TMI.
A cardiac.
Kind of a certain age perhaps, so.
So I know we talked a, a while ago, I think it might have been during even a planning board meeting, but talking about like, all the, um, the lines. Going up to Spring Street, right? And how they just kind of zigzag all the water pipes. And, like, would you have to check all of those two from one end to the other? Like, that would be, like you were saying, digging up.
Well, Spring Street, for example, would, when I was explaining where there's a lot of street scape. Hardscape of sidewalk curb and what have you, that was the area I was thinking about in the back of my mind. Because there's not much lawn up there, if any. You're, basically, if you find a curb box, you're into cutting or jackhammering a slab of a concrete sidewalk up to get to it. And if you can go in through the service line inside the building. And go back to the curb box and not have to dig up all that, much, 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 much easier, more cost effective. Because when you think about it, I've looked at the maps over the years, and this whole thing started roughly about eighteen ninety-five. I always like to throw that date out and start back there. But where that ten inch line came in, which was the original cast iron main from Morris Lake to the town of Newton. The original cast iron ten inch main goes down Spring Street. And it gets over to High Street, up High Street and goes up towards Liberty Street. Where it ties into the new sixteen inch main that we ran up to the two million gallon tank and the pump station. So, right there, it tells you Spring Street is mainly one of those core areas. That's, if it had lead or galvanized, would be a prime candidate, one of the prime candidates, right there in that area.
Hmm.
I just wondered, if you run that line, that swordfish through the line. Then you hit the curb bars, would you be able to get both sides of the curb box?
You just go on the other end of the curb box and go in through there. Yeah, that's why they suggest curb box inside the home. And since you're going in the curb box, you could go only to the, the main on the one side. And on the other side, you could go there. So you actually have those two points of access. Which actually will give you a good read, because we have to dig up the curb box anyway. To, if we go in through the curb box, so you can go in either on the main side. Or at the service side. The line is up to a hundred feet long, you can get longer, so. Minimum you're able to do at least a hundred foot service line. Um, and, and like Dave said, I think it's through electrolysis or something like that. It will, it will read the line. And then, like Dave was trying to make a point, you were asking it about the shell with. The streets, the digging up and everything. It's not just there, you have a lot of homes with landscaping, everything else like that. All that has to be put back in place. We've even had service lines, Dustin will tell you that go underneath concrete porches. So, you know, maybe you could reroute them, but what happens if you, you can't? That's where you're gonna be bearing costs, so it becomes not just digging and replacing lines, it's replacing everything else that's there. So that's, that's what you'd be looking at, and you'd be surprised, I mean, where this. Service line is that, um, Tom was talking about, was an area where maybe we might not have, we didn't think we would have any. So you could get it. Anyway, I know, according to this, nineteen eighty-seven is supposedly when the state of New Jersey banned lead. Technically, you could find lead from there now. I know, reading and talking to Dave, somewhere in his sixties. Is actually where he was supposed to stop using it for running your services and everything, so that's your window. You know, so that's, that's where you're looking back all the way to, I have a hundred year home. I know that yours is older and everything, so that's what you're looking at. And like Tom said. Center of town out, it's just not knowing how far out. And our state roads, there's a lot of old homes on those and everything, so. Those are gonna be like Dave was saying, our most difficult parts.
Yeah.
You know?
You get all that?
Have any positives?
No, I think this was a, a, a great explanation. And we appreciate you guys coming in, and it's, no matter what way you cut it, it's gonna be difficult, it's gonna be a lot of work for you guys, so we appreciate the. Anticipated work that's ahead of us, and I think that it, it seems as if we're all in agreement that. Not loading this onto the end user, to the customer is the way to go here. I think so.
Yes, especially with grant funding, if it's available.
Thanks. Thanks, Dave.
Yes, that would be good.
So it is, is it the desire of the mayor and council to place the ordinance on first reading on the twenty-ninth?
I believe it is.
Hmm.
Yes.
Yes, that Wednesday at seven P M.
Well, you don't need one now, but that works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Any final comments from any council member or the mentor?
So I do have a couple of quick comments, I'm sorry that I missed them before when I was gathering my thoughts earlier, but also related to. Um, when we did the Arbor Day, so I think Debbie Danielson is working with Servos and. Uh, they may or may not be like at New, at Newton Day, but, um, they are looking along with the Shain Tree Commission. Their commission to possibly implement like a townwide tree. Um, purchasing agreement with Servos, so where they would come in with their, um. With the tree and the digger and they guarantee it for a year, and they're working on what that price would be, so, um, stand by for that information. And also, I don't know if anyone mentioned it, but you know, Newton Day is fast approaching as well, July, so. You know, we also have the Miss Newton contest and Little Mister and Miss Newton. And also wanted to mention, I don't, uh, you know, on April twenty-ninth. We did the two ribbon cuttings, you know, one at Pine Street Park and the other at the animal shelter. So, as, uh, Helen mentioned, um. It, that building looks really nice and, you know, if we do have to take in any animals for. Hopefully only an hour or two, if it's, you know, a dog or we get these other animals adopted out and stuff. But at least they have a very nice place to stay and. Great work by everybody involved in those projects, the DPW, Water and Sewer, obviously Animal Control Office. Tom's office and the whole staff involved, um. You know, probably one of the reasons you got recommended as business person here. So, good job by y'all, and that's all I, thank you.
Anyone else?
I do have to make a correction, I actually voted, uh, positive on the minutes for the twenty-second. I was not there, so I have to change that, we'll see.
We're all, we're three in favor and none against, two abstentions.
Any other comments? All right, not hearing anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved at eight oh seven P M. Second.
Do a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, any opposed? Have good night.